Meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education is called to order. And we would certainly like to welcome everyone here this evening to our April 14th, 2014 meeting. And certainly, we hope that all the parents have gotten their tax return in. You have one more day on that. But anyway, we're glad you're here with us tonight to celebrate the achievement of the students and staff. And we also are very proud to have with us Dr. Kim Boham, President of the Community College, and some of his staff, and some of the members of the Board of Trustees. As some of you might know, they are celebrating this year their 50th anniversary. And I think the date it opened was April 2nd, 1964. So we have such a wonderful working relationship with the Community College. The collaboration is unparalleled anywhere in the state of North Carolina. So we do have some recognitions coming up on the program here very shortly. At this time, I would like to call on Dr. Trish Johnson to do our invocation.
May we pray. Dear heavenly Father, we pause now at the end of a almost perfect day to give you all of the praise and all of the glory for the things that we have inherited. We thank you for life on this earth. We thank you for the teachers that are here that give themselves so freely to their students. We are blessed to work in a land where we are free and that we have a Board of Education that supports us. Thank you for our superintendent. Thank you for central office services staff. And especially for our children and parents who make it all worth our while for being here every day. Now, we ask that you guide this meeting and that everything be done according to your will. It is in its name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, we have our pledge of allegiance. Tonight is being led by the Suzuki violin master class from Davenport A+ School. They'll come forward.
All right, well, anybody like to lead us in the pledge? I will do it.
If everyone will stand, please. All right, join me. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Suzuki class may be practicing or having engagement tonight. I think the entire board has heard them on occasion. They are very, very good. So we'll move on with the meeting. Next is the approval of the agenda. And the board members have had the agenda in front of them. Do I hear a motion we approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as we have it before us.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have approval of the minutes. And we had our regular board meeting on March 10th, 2014. And once again, you've had an opportunity to look over those minutes. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes as have been presented to you?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes of the March 10th regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, we have the March 24th, 2014 spring work session that we had at South Caldwell High School. And also, the community board meeting. So do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of those two meetings on that day?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve both the spring work session and community board meeting minutes for March 24th, 2014.
Okay, is there a second?
No second motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna move on with some recognitions here. I'm gonna recognize our superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the audience. It's not often we get to celebrate someone's 50th birthday, but tonight, we are going to recognize one of the most important partners in education here in Caldwell County, and that's the Community College. I would like to read a resolution and would like to propose that the Board of Education adopt the resolution. And after that, I would like to present this resolution, if you pass it, to Ken and to the trustees of the Community College and ask them to please come forward. But the resolution reads, "Resolution of the Caldwell County Board of Education to the Board of Trustees of Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute, resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Whereas, the Caldwell County Board of Education and the Board of Trustees of Caldwell Community College work closely together to serve the educational needs of Caldwell County. And whereas, the superintendent and staff and the president and staff devote their time, energy, and talents to serve the educational needs of Caldwell County. And whereas, the cooperative spirit and efforts of both boards and chief administrators have yielded a supportive, unselfish commitment to serving the educational needs of Caldwell County. And be it further resolved that we recognize the benefits and valuable contributions this cooperation brings to serving the educational needs of Caldwell County. And be it further resolved that we recognize that the college chartered on April 2nd, 1964, will celebrate 50 years of service in 2014. And be it further resolved that we wish to extend congratulations and best wishes to Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute upon its 50th anniversary." Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the resolution.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the resolution in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution for the 50th anniversary or birthday of the Board of Trustees of Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ken, if you and your trustees would join us down here, and the board will come down. We do...
All right, since they finished shaking hands.
I do want you, the audience, to do a look at who is up here. These are our board of, elected Board of Education. These are our appointed Community College trustees. All together, these folks have years and years of service in making education work in Caldwell County. And it works extremely well. And that's why we are so pleased to be celebrating the 50th birthday of our most important partner and probably the one institution that has the most impact on this community with us as far as education. So they have a tremendous history. And we'd like to present a framed copy of the resolution to you, Mr. Chairman. And we would like to give you or Ken an opportunity to say something in certain to introduce those members on the trustees who served. And these folks serve on their free time. They volunteer. They give a lot to the community to make sure that we are successful. And really, truly, the success of Caldwell County is in many ways in the hands of our Community College who risen to the occasion. So Ken, I'll stop talking. You and Larry, if you want to, introduce your...
Dr. Boham, I'd like for everyone to look over in the corner. We've got some of our chief operating people over there. You work for the Community College, please raise your hand. Thank you all.
Do you want me to introduce everybody? Do I need to use the microphone?
I think they could hear you. Ken, I'm not sure.
Most importantly, is the chairman of the Board of Trustees. This is Larry Tyler. Next to him is Mrs. Marilyn Starnes. Next to Marilyn is the vice chair of the board, Jerry Church. Behind him is Jimmy Hemphill. Next to Jimmy Hemphill is Mr. Brenton Kaye. Behind Brenton Kaye is Mr. Bill Stone. Behind Mr. Bill Stone is Mrs. Ann Smith. And next to Ann Smith, who had a very good market, I understand from the newspaper, with Fairfield Chair, is Mr. Alvin Daughtry. And if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Stone, Alvin Daughtry is appointed by these people in the middle. Ann Smith is appointed by these people in the middle. My chairman is appointed by these people. And we have no more schools than that. Bill Stone, who used to work for the Caldwell County School System, is appointed by these people in the middle. Thank you.
Before you guys go, we did also want to, not only the resolution, but we also wanted to give you a certificate. We consider these certificates with one of our pins. I don't know how you're gonna share that, but if you want 15 or 16 pins, we'll give you one. But we wanted to celebrate your birthday in a special way. And again, a lot's been said about the 50th birthday of our Community College partner. But some statistics, and one in particular that really stands out, I think you need to know, is that since they've been in operation over the 50 years, there's over 14,000 adults in our community who have been given degrees. You have so many different programs, and this Community College has helped so many people get their GED. When this, was it 20 or so years ago, when the Community College system was, or 20 years ago, the 78% of the people in this community did not have a high school diploma over the age of 25. And with the help of the Community College and the school system, we now have gotten that down to about 25%. So that speaks volumes about the jobs that you do. And the last thing I'll say about the Community College before I sing to you, which I'm not, is to let the Community College know that we also have two very important schools of ours on your campus. We thank you very much for being host to our middle college, which was created in 1999, and then in 2006, to our early college program. So we appreciate very much your hosting that and making those successful, and again, models across the state to the collaboration. So happy birthday to you. We really do appreciate the collaboration we have and the great things that you do. And probably the one thing that can be said most about our Community College is it is an economic driver. When people come to this community and they look to move to this community, when businesses want to develop in this community, they look at the labor force. And if the skills aren't there, the Community College steps up to make that happen. So you are probably the biggest driver to bringing industry and jobs to our county, as well as continuing the education for leisure and for degrees for our population in the community. So we thank you very much for being a partner.
Dr. Stone, are you really gonna say happy birthday?
No, I'm not. It would spoil the moment. Thank you very much.
Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Chairman Pennell, Board of Education members, and Dr. Stone, now we're come to our other part of honors and recognition. And parents, thank you for coming out tonight. It is icky out there and rainy, and you know it's important when you come out to support your children. So we do have some important things to cover tonight, and our first being the Education Center Art Gallery. So hopefully, you had a chance to see your students' artwork in the hallway, the main hallway of the Education Center. And it will be on display until May the 9th. So children, as I call your names, please come forward because the Board of Education and Dr. Stone would like to present you a certificate of recognition. We'll start with Bayton Elementary School, and the principal is Jason Chief Teller. The art teacher is Jenny Green. Karis Hughes is our first student. The art teacher is Alexis Buchanan. Principal Gwen Rube. Let's start with Barker Bowman, Parker, Parker Bowman. Parker, excuse me, Parker. Thank you, Parker. And Nicole Schlechter. These are our two elementary schools, Bayton Elementary and Dudley Schultz.
Now, the way this works, if you wanna take a picture, just come to the middle. We will stand up here and smile with the students as long as you're taking pictures. They appear to all the cameras. So you've gotta just kinda hold your certificate in front of you. Not even crazy, but smile. Come on back a little bit so we can get a bite of the picture. Keep smiling. All right, we'll keep smiling for those cameras.
Next, we have Valmead Elementary. Art teacher Stephanie Woody-Grochel. Principal Carol Sturgis. Then we have Wes Lenore Elementary. The art teacher is Melissa Yarazuski. And principal is Kristy Holler. We have Angela Banegas Zambrano. And I know she's here. We have Emlyn Foster. And we have Ariana Ovvera. And our final school that we have on display in the Education Center Art Gallery is Hudson Middle School. Art teacher Kelly Woody and principal Bill Griffin. And Abby Shehan. So now it's picture time.
We can put you two in the back, so you're a tabby caller. Certificate's in front of you, face. Smile. They're laughing. That looks like a shell caller.
And parents and students, please enjoy the cookies and punch after the honors and recognition segment of this meeting. And we encourage you to take another look at your child's artwork as you leave this evening. Okay, our next area of honors and recognition is music in the Caldwell County schools. Congratulations to band directors and band programs throughout the district for their continuation of music excellence and superior performances at the recent North Carolina Music Educators Association Music Performance Adjudication. Congratulations to the following. So we have several band directors here this evening and some all-state band members. So we're gonna just call them in alphabetical order. And we're gonna start with Collettsville School. The Collettsville 6th grade band received an excellent in grade 1. The Collettsville Advanced Band received a superior rating in grade 2. Jonathan Beal is the band director. This is not Jonathan Beal. The principal is Craig Styron. And Annie Bean. So Annie Bean is accepting this award for Collettsville. She is a band student who was selected for all-state band this year on string, bass. She is the only student ever from Collettsville School to be selected to the all-state band. And Gamel Middle Concert Band performed in grade 2 and earned a rating of superior. Kevin Townsend is the band director. And principal at Gamel Middle School is Dr. Michael Wyant. Next, we have Granite Falls Middle School. Granite Falls Middle School 8th grade band, excellent, grade 3. Sarah Stafford is band director and Bill Schreiber is principal. They also had two students for all-state band. Lindsay Farr, 8th grader, playing clarinet. Justin Faulkner, 8th grader, also playing snare drum. And I am told that Justin is number one in the state. So he is the number one seed. That's Granite Falls.
Okay, we'll do a short picture here, and let me give you Granite Falls certificate. Come on over, and let's just do a quick picture.
Hybryton High School Symphonic Band, grade 5, superior rating. Justin Hammonds is the band director. He's here this evening. David Caldwell is principal. And there were two students from Hybryton High School who were selected to the North Carolina All-State Band. Joseph Reed, who is with us this evening, and Zach McQuary.
All right, we'll pause for a picture here. All right, come on back in the middle here, guys.
Hudson Middle School 8th grade band received a superior rating in grade 3 music at the MPA. The band is led by Leah Spicer. Principal of Hudson Middle School is Bill Griffin. South Caldwell High School Band, South Caldwell Concert Band, grade 4, superior. South Caldwell Symphonic Band, grade 6, excellent. Jason Childers is the band director. Mike Pika is principal. Jason also had three students to qualify for North Carolina All-State Band. Lisa Colvin, senior, on clarinet. This is her fourth straight year. Regan Murphy, 10th grade clarinet. And Carolyn Church, 10th grade flute. And I'm not sure if your students were able to be here this evening, but very impressive to have three to go to all-state band. Wes Caldwell Symphonic Band, excellent rating in grade 5. Jonathan Stafford, band director. Then William Lenore Middle School. 7th grade band, grade 2, superior rating. Terry Reed, director. 8th grade band, grade 3, superior. Terry Reed, director. Lisa Vaughn is the principal. And the William Lenore Middle School also participated in the Fiesta Va, Invitational M... And the William Lenore Middle School also participated in the Fiesta Va Invitational Music Competition in Atlanta, Georgia on March 28. The 8th Grade Band received a superior rating, first place in Division 1 band. An 8th Grade Jazz Band, superior rating, first place in Division 1 open band. So Terry, what does this make you? How many superiors now? 30 superior ratings.
Say.
Yes, consecutive. We can be very proud of music in Caldwell County. It's a great place to live. We have another special recognition.
Good evening, board members and members of our audience. Tonight we want to recognize someone who got away from us. We want to recognize her years of service to Caldwell County Schools, and this is a great opportunity to do that. I'd ask for Carla to come up and be a part of the board up here. This special ceremony is to recognize Carla for serving as, first of all, Ms. Miller is the finance director. For those of you who may not know exactly what a finance director does, well, she signs the checks. So for those of you who are employed in Caldwell County Schools, her signature was prominently displayed for six years. Prior to that, she served as the Assistant Director for Finance. So Carla has now gone on to another county. We do miss her, but her years of service here produced many awards for our finance department. Probably our financial status is better now than it has ever been, and that's thanks to Carla's leadership. So tonight, we wanted to just take a moment to let her know how much we appreciate her, was it 12 altogether? 14 years of service to Caldwell County Schools, signing all those checks so you all could be paid, for those of you who work for the school system. But more importantly, giving this school system sound financial standing, making sure that we follow the rules, our money is spent wisely, your money is spent wisely as taxpayers. So Carla, for those 14 years of service, we do appreciate you. And I do have a plaque for you.
Put that in your new office proudly. Let you figure it out. Before you leave, and I know you're going to leave shortly, let me introduce our new finance officer, Davey Johnson. This will be the first time Davey's met many folks here, but Davey is now the new person who's signed the checks. We appreciate and welcome you, Davey and Carla.
And we know that many of you probably need to get on home for dinner or maybe some homework for the students, and we hope it's not raining on the outside. But anyway, we're so glad that you're here with us tonight, but have a safe trip home. Now would be an excellent opportunity to leave. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but if you choose to leave now would be a great time. Thank you for being here.
If you all want to wait just one minute, there's a video we'd like for you to see. If you want, I mean, I know you're in a hurry, but this will take, what, two minutes? We'd like for you to see this video. Just look at the monitor. This is two of our very own stars. This is a commercial that's going to be used throughout the state of North Carolina, and we have two original stars in it. So I want you to watch this. If we could. Kathy, do we have sound? It's okay.
Students get higher for what we're expected to accomplish with our students, but yet the resources seem to dwindle.
I think we have great and grandiose ideas, but we're often pulled back to not be able to think outside the box because of the financial involvement.
I mean, as a teacher, you don't want to sit there and the only reason a student cannot move forward is because they don't have this or that. You're trying to feel that they're going to help a student.
The Bright Ideas Grants have expanded the possibilities of what we can accomplish here as teachers to meet the needs of all of our students.
The Bright Ideas are many grants that are available to public school teachers in grades K through 12 to provide innovative and creative activities in the classroom, something that would not be funded through traditional school funding.
I've seen a change in students with this because, you know, normally they wouldn't be able to see things like this, and that was one of the reasons I went with such an unusual thing is making a car out of PVC pipe is to pique that interest, to get them kids to go, wow.
Especially in rural areas where my school is located, they don't have the advantage of getting to go to museums and big outdoor parks and things like that. So us being able to have the Great Outdoors Program, which was building an outdoor learning environment for the children to learn about plants and the environment, it's just invaluable.
It's important for students to be those risk takers and to be those innovators and those adventurers in the future. We want them to be able to take that daring step. So the funding of our grant gives opportunities for teachers to bring new and interesting and invigorating and exciting things.
There's our other star.
And not only promotes thinking, but it promotes a little risk-taking on our students' part.
20 years ago, an exceptional employee was standing in line with a teacher whose finance supplies were their own resources. Bright Ideas now is part of a patchwork of things that we do for local communities that they count on.
The future of Bright Ideas is very important for our students because without the community support.
There's our other star.
Our students would not be as successful as they are.
When we started the project, one thing that we discussed was that when you touch a child, you're touching their parents, you're touching their grandparents, you're touching their aunts, their uncles. And that's a community commitment, to be there for your community, to be part of that community, part of that community. And that's why Bright Ideas program has been at this.
Trish and Carol will be signing autographs a little bit later on, but thank you very much for staying.
Anybody on Blue Ridge Lake? You can round that plus a dollar plus.
Jacob, I hope you're not too nervous, but I decided to let them go before you came up, so I'd, hey, you could have handled it, I got it. Okay. Want me to call them back?
No.
I don't think much Jake Jacob.
I think not a thing or.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. And we had no public comment as of 4:30 this afternoon. And the next item on the agenda is, once again, to recognize Dr. Stone, and he has some board information and is going to recognize one of our students in the county.
Okay, Jacob, if you want to come on up. Board members, members of the public, Mr. Chairman, this is Jacob Latell. And Jacob is an interesting young man. I had a chance to sit in on his graduation project, and I thought it might be something that you might be interested in as well. So welcome to the board meeting, Jacob.
Thank you.
And your principal, of course, is Candace Hagaman. So go right ahead.
All right, well, my name is Jacob Latell, and for my graduation project, I did write a book of collected poetry. It has been a wonderful opportunity for me to reach out to other people in the county, and it is autobiographical, autobiographical, but it is a way for me to express myself through my poetic uniqueness and through my, what I love to do. So it's been, once again, it's been a wonderful opportunity for me to not only show people what I'm capable of and hopefully in the future be able to do through my writing, but to, I, through my childhood experiences, I was able to put these things in this book and hopefully be able to touch the lives of other children that may go through the same things I did. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
This was your graduation project.
Yes.
So what did you think of the graduation project?
Graduation project, I was a little surprised by it at first, a little intimidated by it at first, but once I got started, once I started, you know, I knew I wanted to write. I knew I wanted to be able to reach out to other people, and through this book, I was able to do so. The graduation project was just some, it was an outlet for me to be able to publish this book and meet the goals I had in mind.
Whenever I met you at the graduation project, you were telling me the timeframe of how long it took you to do that book, and I think it was a relatively quick time that you
It was.
compiled all this and put it together. So if you'd share that with the ones that didn't get to hear that story, it was pretty amazing.
I did have a lot of this poetry already written because I did not like to express what I had written with other people, one, because it's personal, and two, because I didn't think anyone would care. But through this, through this book, I realized that there are so many people who are willing to listen, so many people who are willing to read. It took me several months to compile, to take the photographs that went in this book, most of which are, by the way, from Redwood Park in Hudson. And it just, it's, I don't know how to explain, you know? It was a great opportunity for me.
How long have you been writing? Since you were five or six?
Since middle school. But since middle school, I didn't, when I went to 6th grade, I didn't really know, you know, I had nothing in mind. But by the end of 8th grade, I knew I want to be a writer, I want to, I want to be able to touch other people through my writing. And I've been writing ever since.
And I think, Joe, you, Mr. Sam, you and Ms. Coffey, and were we the judges? Ms. Coffey, what was it?
I was with you.
Dr. Hall. And he did a phenomenal job in his presentation as well for the graduation project.
And I hope we're going to hear from you, about you, as you continue to write in the future.
Yes.
Is that available for purchase?
It is, it is available for purchase on amazon.com, and it's going to be cheaper on amazon.com than it is on barnesandnoble.com, but it is on barnesandnoble.com. It is not in the store because I have not sold enough yet and because they haven't really, you know? I've sold over 25 copies now, I think, but, you know, I've, I've been able, I just want to speak for a moment, I have been able to reach my social worker, my past social worker that I had, she took the book to her, I don't even know who it is, but someone higher than her, and hopefully it's going to be able to be bought by the social services and distributed to foster parents for them to read, for them to understand, you know, what their, what their foster children might be going through and that sort of thing, and that, that really touched me. The name of the book is not even there yet, and it's a book about journeys, it's a book about, you know, what I went through. So at this time, I
I do have copies of my book.
For you all. I have signed them, so.
Jacob, I will treasure this. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. There are several people here with me today, my principal Candace Hagaman, and my U.S. history teacher was also my 9th grade seminar teacher, Ms. Sendal Chavers. So I would like to recognize them.
Well, Jacob, you did a great job. I have had a chance to have an advance copy, so I have read most, if not all, of the poems. I pick it up every so often just to read the poetry. And you write well.
Thank you.
And it's quite interesting. And do you want to tell how you got the title?
Say again.
Tell us that, how you got the title?
The title, I, I slept around the title for a while. I didn't really know what I wanted to call it, I didn't really know what I wanted it, but not even there yet to me. It means, you know, I'm not even there yet, you know? I'm working towards my, my life, what I want to do to become a writer. The reason why it is not a typo, it is altogether, because it makes you look twice. It makes you want to, you know, look deeper into it, see what it really says, and that to me really portrays myself. You have to look twice at me before you really recognize what, what I've been through.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jacob, great job, Jacob. Thank you very much, and good luck on your college career and your writing.
Thank you.
And at some point, you'll be a bestseller, and that 25 will be 25 million, and then that's it.
I hope so. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services,
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have several items for your attention this evening. Beginning with, oh yeah, I have my manager over there, and my accountant, and my attorney just left the room, and I skipped writer, so you'll have to see all of them first, but I'll give you my autograph. I have several items for your attention this evening, starting with Exhibit 3. Exhibit 3 includes usual and customary items for your information only. Exhibit 4 includes usual and customary personnel items that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 5 includes transfers for the 2013-14 school year. Since the last board meeting, we received 45 requests for student transfers of the 45, all 45 meet board-established criteria. We respectfully recommend approval of these transfers. If granted, that brings our total transfers for the year 2013-14 to a total of 651. I respectfully recommend approval of the student transfer requests.
Do I hear a motion? We approve 2013-2014 student transfers as they have been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2013-2014 transfers as they have been presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And final exhibit, Exhibit 6 includes student transfer requests for the 2014-15 school year. I had an earlier start this year, so we have a total, we received a total of 240 requests for student transfers for the coming school year. Of the 240, 235 meet established criteria. We respectfully recommend approval of the 235 student transfers for the 2014-15 school year.
Do I hear a motion? We approve the 2014-2015 student transfers as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the 2014-2015 student transfers as presented.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Can we get an autograph afterwards? Next, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services, Dr. Jeff Church.
Dr. Johnson did hire me to
And Exhibit Two is an ADM application to pay for a partial, partial payment. I respectfully request that you accept the bids and approve the ADM application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bids for carpet replacement at the schools presented, and also the ADM application for those respective schools. Second. And a second. Any questions? Anyone have any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Items three and four, we received bids for HVAC replacement at Hybryton High School on Tuesday, March 25th. William C. Reynolds was the successful bidder at $387,300. I respectfully request that we accept the bids for Hybryton High School and a lottery application for the funding. This is Phase Two out of Phase Six. There are six phases in this project as we move through. So I respectfully request that you accept the bids and accept the lottery application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bids from Reynolds for the roof replacement at Hybryton High School, as well as the lottery application for funding.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Items five and six, as we're replacing the HVAC system, it's time also to replace the roof under the same area, the B-wing area. Barger Ash was the low bidder. Bids were received on March 25th for this project as well, and I'm requesting that we accept the base bid plus alternate number two, and that will be using a Carlisle roof. Barger Ash, as you know, is local, and I respectfully request that we accept these bids and the lottery application to fund the project.
Do I hear a motion? We accept the bids for the roof replacement at Hybryton High School, as well as the lottery application for funding. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Items seven and eight is roof replacement for Gamel Middle School, two classroom addition. The bids were received on March 25th as well. Barger Ash was the successful bidder, same Carlisle roof. If we accept the base, the base bid and alternate number two at $10,784,000. I respectfully request that you accept the bids and the lottery application for funding.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept the bids for the Gamel Middle School roof replacement, as well as the lottery application for the middle school, Gamel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bids for the roof replacement at Gamel Middle School, as well as the lottery application. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item seven and eight is roof replacement for Gamel Middle School, two classroom addition. The bids were received on March 25th as well. Barger Ash was the successful bidder, same Carlisle roof. If we accept the base, the base bid and alternate number two at $10,784,000. I respectfully request that you accept the bids and the lottery application for funding.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept the bids for the Gamel Middle School roof replacement, as well as the lottery application for the middle school, Gamel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bids for the roof replacement at Gamel Middle School, as well as the lottery application. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. On Wednesday, May the 14th, we're having a high-quality surplus sale. And attached under item nine is the list of items being deemed surplus. I respectfully request that you deem those items surplus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the surplus sale items for the May 14th sale. I can't wait to see the 1948 tractor.
It's a very high-quality tractor.
Are you sure it's 1948?
Is it mobile, or is it, you have to pick it up and carry it?
Think Green Acres.
But it's well worth the money that they've been buying it.
1948, it would be considered an antique.
It is, it is.
Those more units are maybe the ones at Hybryton now that are being moved.
We're actually, the ones, the ones at Hyb, we have three at Hybryton that we're going to put online with GovDeals.com, and then there's one at Sawmills that we're going to put into the sale. Yes, sir. And we're actually going to put the tractor, we're going to put it online too with GovDeals.com.
Anyone want a second? A motion about the surplus sale.
A second motion.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 10 is a uniform contract with UniFirst, and that is to provide uniform rentals for our bus garage and our maintenance staff. The unit prices are included in the contract, and I respectfully request that you accept this contract.
Do I hear a motion? We approve the uniform contract with UniFirst.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue, continue, is that correct?
This is the new, a new vendor.
Okay, brand-new vendor.
Yes.
All right. I move that we contract with UniFirst for our uniforms for the coming year.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions?
I was going to say, I looked at the length of this contract, and I mean, I think people have had brain surgery with less complicated language than there is in this current contract. It's, it's difficult to imagine all the things that have been put before us, the conditions and so forth.
And it is a three-year contract with this company.
So it, it seems that they've covered virtually anything that could possibly happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think it's very important to have Caldwell County schools on shirt, so that's why the maintenance and the bus garage. If that moving to get on school property, we are.
Correct.
And the costs are similar to what we've had in the past.
Costs are similar to what we have in the past, a little bit lower than what we've had in the past.
Okay, well, very good.
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a copy of the Driver's Education Contract. This is with North Carolina Driving School, and it's just an extenuation of the current contract, and it's for another three-year period. I respectfully request that you accept the contract as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Driver's Education Contract as presented with the North Carolina Driving School.
A second motion.
And we have a second. Any questions?
Just one concern. My daughter is going to be taking the driver's ed issue, so you may want to up the contract a little bit.
Up the insurance.
Now, warn, warn the drivers, so they might want to be prepared.
Flashing light on top. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the purchase of a new serving line for South Caldwell Cafeteria. The lowest successful bidder was C.E. Holt at $116,613.07. These funds come out of child nutrition, out of G.I.A.'s funding. I respectfully request that you accept these bids as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept bids as presented for serving line at South Caldwell High School.
Is this to replace one, or is it to add one?
Go ahead.
It's to replace both the hot and cold area, as well as the cashier stands in the dining room.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. We accept the bids.
Okay, we have a second. A second. Any questions? Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 13, I regretfully bring before you tonight, that is a motion to increase lunch prices only by 10% next year, and that is based on federal, federal regulations. There is no choice in this matter. So I, I request approval of the increase as presented.
Jeff, that's a 10 cent, right?
What I say. Percent. Yes, I'm sorry, 10 cents. I'm sorry.
And that's lunch only?
That's lunch only, yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? That we approve the 2014-2015 meal price increase for lunch only?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the 2014-2015 meal price increase for lunch only, as we respect the federal requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions? I think we all understand.
We're doing it because we have to.
We're doing it because we have to.
And so when you vote, Lex, I hope you'll notice that all of them are holding their nose, as we have to do if they vote for this, so it's distasteful.
Something we don't have any choice in. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Church. Next, we have our Finance Director, Mr. David Johnson, and again, welcome.
Chairman Pendle, Board Members, and Dr. Stone, I have good evening. Three amendments for your consideration tonight. Budget Amendment Number 17 is an increase to the State Public School Fund in the amount of $231,827, bringing the total state budget for Caldwell County Schools to $72,197,679. Budget Amendment Number 18 is an increase to the Local Current Expense Fund in the amount of $86,625, bringing the total to current expense budget to $21,608,700. And Budget Amendment Number 19 is a decrease to the Federal Grant Fund in the amount of $169, brings the total federal grant fund to $7,852,521. These amendments are approved tonight as presented. It'll bring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools to $118,55,010. It's the recommendation of the Finance Director that these amendments be approved as submitted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendments to the State Public School Fund, the Local Current Expense Fund, and the Federal Grants Fund as presented.
Thank you. We have a second.
A second motion.
Any comments, any questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have some board information. We, as we've mentioned on occasion, board members have to get training every year, and we've had three that have recently got some training, so we want to hear from, from them in their recent conference that they attended. So will Dr. Helen Hall lead us off here?
Yes, I'll lead you off, starting with Saturday of the conference. We were very fortunate to be kicked off with Thomas Friedman as guest speaker. He's the writer of the bestseller, The World is Flat, the winner of three Pulitzer Prizes. He has covered monumental stories from around the globe, and writes for New York Times, and has written for them since 1981. He spoke on the current state of education, which all of us really wonder about. He shared that he could not understand education, public education in particular, until he understood, understood K-12 education. And his position is, we must focus on 21st century globalization and the hyper-connectedness of the world, and nobody's been able to explain it sufficiently. He, he considers this a Gutenberg scale change. Friedman expressed how numerous jobs are becoming obsolete, things that we can see so easily as we look at TurboTax, as we look at legal services, as we look at shopping, all these things becoming prevalent online and making a big difference in our economy and those that would generally serve in those jobs. In his words, being a consumer is going to be fantastic. Being an innovator is going to be fantastic, and the ability of being a leader is going to be more challenging than ever, and even harder for the worker. What he said very strongly was, average is officially out. So that really moves the bar for everyone. He said, doing more and being more creative is going to be essential for our future. Highlighting another session from Saturday, it was focused on the new normal, dealing with, dealing effectively with change. Change popped up all over again, and it's continuing to pop up. There were just a few points from the change session that I'll mention to you. One, change is not going to slow down, believe it or not, as we can feel it. It's important for us to realize the things that we can change, opposed to those things that we cannot change. And when change comes, his position is give it our best effort, and we know that's going to be essential. He says, we must create a change-ready organization with clear expectations, quick response to problems, utilization of change experts, and revel in those things that we do accomplish. His position is, we must have passion, persistence, and deliberate practice for effective change, and shared patterns have to be in place in much that we do. One thing he said that I think we realize already is, the whole world is watching us, all of us that are serving as educators. And one other session that I attended, and I'll be brief, was focused on superintendent and board relations. I think we have that one down right, okay? That was a meaty session, you might say. It was, and it started out as a conversation between two educational leaders, and was presented as a conversation of two leaders who addressed board practices, and I said we got A-plus, because so many things that they touched on, we get in our initial training as board members. Focused on state versus federal mandates, and there it got a little much, quite a bite there, because there's such a concern that the federal government is imposing so much that the states are challenged to do what the states are initially responsible for doing, especially when a lot of employees at the state level are paid with federal dollars. So that became a very interesting conversation. Additionally, they discussed the importance of engaging the public in our conversations regarding funding. So overall, creativity, essential change, and effective leadership were given repeated emphasis on day one of our conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Our Vice Chairman, Mr. Tim Hopkins.
Sure, it was a pleasure to be able to attend with Dr. Hall, and also Mr. Knight, who's going to be sharing a little bit. On day two, our general session speaker was Sir Ken Robinson, Ph.D., originally from, from Great Britain. I think now he's in California. Very prestigious speaker, and also a leader in the development of education. Some of his videos, I did not realize this until then, until hearing him, but some of his videos of his speeches have been seen by an estimated, and he corrected the information, 300 million people. So, very engaging speaker. He spoke a lot, and in fact, one of his books is called The Element: How to Find, How Finding Your Passion Changes Everything. And he really focused and zoned in on helping kids find their passion, about how each kid is unique, each individual is important, and that if we can tap into the passions of each of our children, then that will help foster not only learning, but also foster their creativity and their own personal innovation. A couple of just snippets from his speech I put down here. One, and I love this one, he simply said this, "Learning is a conversation, not a transfusion." And let that soak in a little bit, but sometimes, you know, especially in the past, we've tended to view education as just something that we spew out, something that we give, something that we hook up through an IV into our kids and hope that they get it so at some point in time, they can regurgitate that on some type of standardized testing. And he said, for learning to take place, and it take place successfully, it has to be conversation-based, not just merely instituting a transfusion. And then, I appreciated this too, because it made me think of, of our free and reduced, and not only our free and reduced, but all of those that are in need, even in our county here in Caldwell. He said, education for some kids is not their best shot, it's their only shot. And we have the responsibility to make sure that we get it right every time. Great speaker. In fact, I want to pick up one of his books, so, but I would, I would encourage you to do the same. I attended several sessions. The first session I went to was on public schools in 2025. You know, and I started thinking about that, and looking at that, and I thought, wow, you know, it's a long ways away. And then I started thinking, it's not. It's really not. It's 2014 now. And it really focused on how the world of education and the world of learning- And it really focused on how the world of education and the world of learning continues to evolve. And the one thing that I've noticed, I'm sure that those in our educational community have noticed too, is how the evolution of learning is evolving, but it's evolved at a much quicker pace now than it used to. He said, the speaker in this session said, "In the future, schools will take many forms, a lot different maybe than what they are now, the traditional type of schools." And I do believe here in Caldwell County, we are on the cutting edge of some of those changes. But he said, "Be aware because there are going to be challenges as to how we operate our schools, how we take care of them, how we teach, and how we also interact with our communities." So some challenges ahead. But the next session, and I really want to kind of focus a little bit on this, was technology. And I wish James was here, but he's already gone. But be able to share some of this with him also. But this one was called BYOD, Bring Your Own Device, okay? And I know we have policies in regard to that. But it talked about how to seamlessly integrate technology within our schools. And that's a continual challenge. How do you integrate technology so that students and staff can successfully and safely use this technology? And I think we're making progress in that, but it's always going to be a juggling ball, I'm sure. But just the importance of that, because like it or don't like it, our kids use technology. And they're going to continue to use technology. Then I went to another session on technology. And this one was one I went to previously by the same speaker at another conference in the past. His name is Jim Spelloz, great speaker. The reason I went there is because he always gives the list of 100 new educational apps that you need to have for your iPads, for your iPhones. And so I've got that list, so if anybody would like it, in fact, I'd already planned on sharing it with the board here and send you the email with that list, so you can look those up. And hopefully we can download some of these for our iPads and.
All free apps. All free apps.
All free, yeah, yeah. Well, they start out free and then you can buy the graduated one if you want.
Get rid of ads, you have to pay for that.
Right. But I'll be glad to share that with the administration and also with the board members and James and those in technology. But once again, just a wonderful time, but, and it's good, not only is it good to go and just to learn, what it makes you proud of where you're from, as we said about our relationship with the community college, but also lets us know where we are and where we need to continue to move. And so, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Knight?
All right, I'm going to report on day three. It started out at 8:00 that morning with the general session, there were three speakers. First is a 19-year-old, 2013 high school graduate named Nikhil Goyal. He's from New York and he was named top 30 of People Under 30 in Education. Name of his book was Skipping Class. He resides in New York. But of all the three speakers that morning, he was the one that did not get a standing ovation, if you recall. He had some kind of weird ideas and different things. But I'll quote a couple of things he said. One thing he said was, he quoted Mark Twain, he said, "Never let schooling get in the way of education." Second speaker, which was much better, was Erin Gruell from Long Beach, California. She, her book is named Room 203. She taught misfits, she called them, and kids that lived in fear, came from gangs. There's 150 kids that she taught, and she turned the school completely around. She said, "Education is the greatest equalizer in kids." All these kids, she said that they would take, take it and teach others. So she didn't say she taught one, they would teach others. Anyway, she said, "The evil, get the evil out and the good will prevail." The third speaker was a lady named Angela Mayers. She talked about being brave. And she said, "There's three things you need to be," of course, she's speaking to school board members. She said, "First, you need to love who you are, know who you are, and then be that." So that was her wrap-up for the day. Second session we had that morning, this was about 11:00 o'clock, we had a gentleman by the name of Irving Johnson. Y'all might know him as Magic. So Magic Johnson got to speak to us and he was a very good advocate for kids. He said, "Kids need access to great public education." He told a story one time that, he said, when he was in third grade, his team won the state championship basketball, fourth grade, fifth grade. Got up to sixth grade, came with the Saturday before the game, he was ready to win another state championship. But he failed to turn in his homework that day on Friday. His teacher said, "You're not going to play tomorrow." He showed up for the game and sure enough, he didn't get to play. So he learned a very valuable lesson as a sixth grader. He did things the right way, he's from Michigan. He taught, he even brought two kids up on stage and told them to set their goals high. Anyway, he said, "If I could succeed, you could succeed also." One o'clock session I went to was very interesting. It said, "Six things you never want to hear spoken in a board or school board room." And Dr. Stone, take note, I'm going to do like David Letterman. Number six, some kids just don't want to learn. You don't ever hear that. Number five, said, "I'm going to tolerate ineffective board members." I think they had problems with unions or something. Number four said, "You never want to hear a motion to immediately not renew the superintendent's contract."
That should be number one.
Yeah. Number three, it said, "You should, someone, you don't want to hear my say, I should have known you were going to say that." Number two, state auditors found serious issues that they're investigating. And number one is, "Don't tell me that I can't speak up about what we spoke about in closed session." Those are six things you never want to hear anybody. And then the last session, the final session in the afternoon, was a gentleman by the name of Simon T. Bailey from Buffalo, New York. He's also a Disney employee. He is owner, founder of Brilliant Institute Incorporated. He says there's four types of brilliance, service, personnel, teacher, and leadership, he called it, not leadership, but leadership. And he is a hope pusher, pushing hope in all the kids. He said, "Students sometimes drop out, or most times drop out because they lose hope. And we need to create hope in all of our kids." So that was our sessions and they were very rewarding and meaningful and I'm proud to attend, so thank you for that.
Thank you. To each of you, Sam Lucker, what a good conference. Very good, Mr.. Next is superintendent's report, do you have something to add?
I do very briefly, I want to talk about soft lockdowns versus hard lockdowns. And I know this has made the media quite a bit lately. But last Thursday, of course, we had a soft lockdown that went from one school to 11 schools altogether. A lot of lessons to be learned from this, and Libby and I have talked about this. We'll be talking with law enforcement about lessons that we can learn from that. But I do want to remind our public that the first and foremost thing in any kind of lockdown is that we get the kids safe and we put them in a safe environment, whether it's a soft lockdown or whatever, or a hard lockdown. And in this case, the system worked. My hats off to Hudson Middle and to all of our 11 schools who responded to a soft lockdown. That, of course, means that kids stay in the building, can't go out. It also means that we limit the number of people to who law enforcement lets into the buildings. So, you know, I know a lot of, what we did learn from this is that kids text. And when they text, they text misinformation. And so as we, as Libby made a alert now call later on that night, we learned, we've got, we've got some things that we can pick up from. But I do want the, certainly the message to be across that we take safely, extremely urgent on time when it happens. And so when law enforcement tells us that there's something that we need to secure the kids in the building, we're going to do that, that's our first thought, that's our first action. The communication piece will come after we have made sure that every child is safe. And so my hat's off to all 11 schools who participated in that soft lockdown. It really does, should be a great comfort to parents to know that the system works. The communication, we'll work on that piece a little bit later because we know when people start sending out texts and it's misinformation, it creates a stir. But the last thing in the world we'd want on a soft lockdown is for hundreds of people showing up on our campus trying to get their students. It impedes law enforcement, it defeats the purpose of a soft lockdown if people are trying to come in and out. And I just wish, and I know that parents do trust us that we're going to keep the kids safe. That is our first and foremost thing. And so I am most pleased, even though I didn't like the fact that we had 11 schools on locked, soft lockdown, I am most pleased that it worked in every single one of them and that the kids were safe and safe at all times. And that's the way we're going to continue to lock down. We'll continue to look at it and assess it. But for those parents who were concerned about the communication piece, we'll work on that. But the important thing to us was not communicating, was making sure the kids were safe. And that's going to continue to be our top priority. So that's a soft lockdown, so a hard lockdown, we'll let you know about that too. So just bear with us and if you have any suggestions for us, members of the public, we certainly will look at that. But safety first and again, the system worked and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. We all know that this is a busy time of year and there's many things that you can participate in. Special Olympics will be coming up soon. And this Wednesday at Civic Center at 11:30 is the Volunteer of the Year banquet. So, you know, keep that in mind. And we've got proms and graduations and band concerts, so, you know, just kind of keep up with the calendar there as to what's taking place. I think Dr. Stone, in the last email, gave us a good many of those dates. So keep that in mind, I'm sure we'll be getting some other invitations as time goes on. Our next regular board meeting will be May 12th, 2014, here in the boardroom. And certainly we hope that everyone will be here for the retirement banquet. And that will be across the street at Civic Center and that will be on June 17th at 11:30.
There's one other big date that's not on there is on May 29th, Trish, 6:30 at the Civic Center. We'll be having our celebration of Caldwell County, the other years and kind of a great event. So I forgot to put that on the agenda, but that's May 29th, 6:30 Civic Center. Another big event for the district.
Very good. Not a problem. Anybody have anything else they want to add? Well, we're glad that everyone's here tonight and hope you have a good evening. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? And have a good evening.